Calls order, City of Forest Park, Council Work Session, July 6, 2020. We have one item above the line. The first item is Forest Park Square renovation. That would be Councilwoman Herbie and I assume Paul.
Yes, Phillip Edison owns the mall across from the municipal building where Kroger is. And they had been in discussions with Kroger for a while about doing renovations to Kroger and facade and other parts of the mall. And they have reached a, close to reaching an agreement where Kroger would invest about 1.8 million to do interior renovations to the Kroger. And Phillip Edison would spend about a half a million to do renovations to the facade and an expansion of Kroger's and about a quarter of a million to renovate the parking lot. They come to us for an incentive agreement and the staff is recommending a $10,000 redevelopment grant, which would certainly go a long way in helping us to retain Kroger's in that mall. They would also, in the process, be signing a 10-year lease. And so, I don't know if Paul has anything else he has to add.
First, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Good. Councilor Herbie's described the project very well. The one thing with regard to the 10-year lease extension, it is important to note that this includes potential options to extend the lease another 10 to 20 years on the back end. So this has the potential for us to keep Kroger here for quite a long time. As all of you know, keeping Kroger is kind of job one with this particular center. It keeps it viable, it keeps Kroger in our community. One of the things that we've always been concerned about is trying to maintain our, we've got a very good presence with the grocery market. We've got Audi, we've got Walmart, and we've got Kroger. Some of our neighbors don't have any of those. So it's important for us to kind of keep this in place. It gives us an opportunity not only to keep Kroger, but I think in the long run, by keeping the anchor tenant in place, it gives us an opportunity to continue working with the property owner to ultimately attract an even better tenant mix to the rest of the shopping center. So we do have some opportunities here. I think this gives us a great opportunity to keep Kroger in place. The one thing that I like about this project, if those of you might remember, we were approached late last year about potentially working with the shopping center owner. They had dramatically pulled back their request on the application for the incentive side. You might remember that some of the numbers we were talking about originally to get this deal done were in the six-figure range. You know, a $10,000 redevelopment grant is a very modest way for us to invest in the project, keep them here. And quite honestly, I think it's a good way for us to, you know, keep our foot in the door, not only with the property owner but with Kroger, and keep the center viable for many, many years to come. This is a very important project for us. Without this anchor tenant in place, you know, we all know the type of situation we would probably be looking at with regards to the shopping center. This is an important step forward. And quite honestly, I have to give the property owner credit in this instance because you might remember, we actually had a meeting with Phillip Edison, probably about the middle of last year, where we expressed some concerns from them. Job one was keeping Kroger in place. And so, they really did go to work, put together a deal that is mutually beneficial, both for the tenant, for the community, and I have to give them some credit. We've had our differences over the years, but honestly, in this instance, Phillip Edison really came through, put together a good deal. And I think this is a way for us to keep that shopping center up and running and really a viable retail destination for many years to come.
Okay, anything from anybody else? Any questions on this issue?
Yes, Paul, I have a question.
Yes.
So when you talk about expansion, are they going to add more space or they're just renovating?
It's primarily a renovation project, interior and exterior. So you will see a facade improvement in the front. That's something we were very anxious to see. I think all of us recognize. I mean, Kroger's a good company. They kept the property up. But, you know, the property, honestly, it looks like a Kroger from the 1980s and 90s. They're going to update the facade. They're going to give it a more modern look. They are also going to do a small pump out, which if you're familiar with the property, there's a canopy there. They're actually going to break out part of that area, come into the canopy space. And what that will allow them to do will be to, it allows them to add their click list function to that location. So for those of you who've gone to other Krogers, I know with the recent COVID crisis, I did this with my mom quite a bit because she's 82 years old. So we did click lists from her Kroger and went out and, you know, and actually picked it up there. So this is a really nice, important step where that delivery click list function will be added to our location. And I think that really rounds out the services at our Kroger.
Thank you.
Anything else from anybody else?
So a question in regards to the area around possible additional employees. So it doesn't have any subject line that deals with any possible future additional jobs?
No.
Other than what construction workers do as far as the remodeling of it?
We don't have job and payroll numbers is this particular incentive is geared towards the property owner. So it's geared towards Phillip Edison. They were basically charged with going out and doing the lion's share of the work with Kroger. Basically, I don't think we're going to see any additional jobs from Kroger, but it would be retaining their existing payroll, their existing workforce and keeping that in place. Obviously, you know, we talked about it. I think if you just look at the neighborhood shopping centers where we've lost a grocery store anchor, it makes it very difficult to market those properties for retail in the future. So this was an incredibly important step. And again, I've had my differences, and I think we all have at times with, you know, some other things are going on at Forest Park Square. Phillip Edison has really stepped up in this case and gotten this deal done. Got it done really in a matter of two or three months and put together a good deal, I think, for everyone.
Okay. Kroger's is the key component with this, none of the other businesses in that area.
Yes. Anything else from anybody else? Well, I will add, I will add two things. One, Reggie, they're not adding jobs, but I know that they are understaffed. They're looking for people. They are trying to hire every day. You've been over there, if you paid any attention when you go over there, they have, there's a perpetual hiring sign on the door because they can't, they're having a real hard time, just like most other places, of getting people and keeping people. Secondly, and I know Paul don't usually blow his own horn, and it may not be widely known, but for a number of years, a couple of our neighbors have been really working hard to try to get Kroger to move from Forest Park into their neighborhoods. And I know that Paul has kept, it's been a big, big part of keeping that from happening. I think, as he just alluded to, if you think about down further on Waycross, Waycross and Hamilton, when the IGA store left there. If we were to lose that Kroger, it would be a tremendous hole in Forest Park. Getting a new, any other grocery store would be next to an impossibility. So I just wanted to thank Phillip Edison for their work and Paul for his in broken this deal and allowing us to keep it. And as he said, you know, the initial thing is going to be 10 years with options for 10 to 20 years. It's something that we need to look at very seriously and jump on right away. Because as I said, I know there is two, at least two, if not three other communities that are just waiting to snap up that Kroger. Anything else from anybody else on that particular issue? Thank you, sir. Thank you, Councilwoman Herbie.
Thank you, Captain.
We have five below the line items. Is there any one or anything on any of these items that anybody would like to bring up?
Just had a few questions to ask about that, the CARES Act. I see that we got some restrictions on some of the use of the funds and the examples that's listed. I would just want the question around the comment of the medical expenses or cost of testing of those, of those subject lines, reference to employees or employees and residents in the combination?
Well, and I don't know if Don's on yet, but I can tell you that the monies that are coming from the CARES Act in terms of what those monies can be used for is something that is passed along with the money. It's not, it's not our choice to say, well, we can, we'll use it for this or we'll use it for that.
Mayor.
Yeah.
This is Harley. I did, I attended a two-hour training last week, Thursday, in regards to how this money could be utilized. And it can be utilized for healthcare-related expenses, whether it's employees or testing the community. We can, if council chooses to do that. But we have a lot of expenses as it relates to remodeling our building to be more COVID compliant. We have some expenses as related to, you know, overtime with the safety forces. So we were, we're going to take advantage of FEMA money, but we're also going to use this money to help with matching funds for FEMA because I think FEMA only provides 75% coverage. And the list of what we can use it for was primarily for me to give directors guidance on recommendations on how to use the money.
Thank you, Harley. Anything else, any other, Reggie, first of all, did that, answer your question, Reggie?
Yeah, so I'm just looking at the listing that you have that's identified, and it just says medical expenses. And so I was just wondering whether, is that a combination of employees of the city and residents or employees of the city?
It can be for employees if they test positive and they end up being quarantined to cover their wages. It can also be if you all decided to provide your own testing to the community, that it could also do that. But we would have to develop that type of program.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions on that?
Just a quick, quick note, Mr. Mayor. The legislation is essentially, and we'll be talking about that, essentially to create a fund. And that's part of the process that we have to go through to put this money in its own pot. So when we get the funds, it'll allow us to deposit into one big pot, and then we have to spend it out of that fund according to these guidelines. And we already have a significant amount of expenses that we've already collected. We've been collecting since the first day that started. And we'll be reimbursing ourselves for those. And we also have funding that would be related to how we had to change the tax office as of the setup of that and making it, making our building safer, not only for the, for the community but for the people who work in it. So we have a lot of things like that. But we also have, and we'll be talking about later on, is a, we want to implement a small business incentive program for a small amount, for a portion of these funds as much as we can. We'll be talking about that as well. So, but we need to make sure that we have our expenses, the true expenses of the city covered, that we, that this pandemic cost the city to make sure that we can move forward because we've lost a significant amount of revenue. And we've also had a significant amount of expenses related to it. So that'll be the first source of these funds and we'll move forward. One question I did have from a lot of folks is the testing that went on this last week that was provided by the county. And the, we did not pay for any of that testing. That was county provided and state provided through the National Guard. But the, we did have a significant amount of overtime, as it turned out, because we had to end up stepping in and doing a lot of crowd control and traffic control. So we ended up pulling people in off the, off of calling them in for overtime. So that kind of expense would be something we can reimburse, but we're going to send the county a bill for that. Hopefully they'll reimburse it out of their COVID funds. Since this was expenses specifically related to things that they did and that we supported them on. But those expenses for those testing, those tests, those were not city expenses.
Anything else from anybody else on that? I just, in regards to the testing that was done last week, it's not one of the items that's necessarily listed here on the agenda, but just to give you a little bit of information in Don, I don't know if Alfie Jerome, but Don can add to this as well. There were four days of testing through the county, done by the National Guard. The first day of testing was done at the Old Kmart site and tested some 740 people. The second day was at Wood of Delivery, at Wood of Deliverance. And I believe there, they tested right at about 900. On day three, the testing was at Forest Chapel. And that was close to, that was right around 1,000 people. And then on the last day over at the, well, actually behind Old Time Pottery, I guess is where it was, in the parking lot of Wal-Mart's, there was close to 1,100. So we probably all together tested somewhere between 3,500 and 4,000 people. It was, it went, first of all, obviously, I think everybody was surprised at the number. I don't think anybody in the beginning would have anticipated that many people. It went rather smoothly, obviously, like anything else. The bigger problems came on the first day because we had to make some adjustments. And as far as Forest Park is concerned, as Don just alluded to, our problems came from, one, not being given information that we needed in terms of who was to do what and why and how, especially where traffic control was concerned. Because initially, we were basically, we were told in so many words that all we needed to do was provide the sites and everything else would be taken care of. But I've learned over time that what is said and what is done, usually they have no relation to each other. But our people, our people did a great job. The fire department, our police department, they, as we are, you know, we've come to expect them to do a good job and they did. They stepped up. They did what was necessary. I don't, I don't think there were any real major problems. I think maybe on the first day or the second day, they, meaning the guard, ran out of, ran out of individual tests, which had nothing to do with us, obviously. There, you know, it was extremely hot. So people tend to get a little short-tempered when, you know, in hot weather and things didn't move as quickly as they thought they should move. But again, that was no fault of ours. We, you know, we weren't doing the testing. I think the first three days, they did a combination of drive-up as well as walk-up testing. They decided not to do any of the walk-ups, I believe, at the Walmart site because by then, you know, like anything else, you know, the longer you do something, the better that you get. And they figured out that they could probably do a better job of it just by having everybody to do drive-throughs. So very pleased with the, with the way things worked out and the outcome of it. I know that, I believe it was at Forest Chapel, Councilwoman Moore volunteered over there one day. And she can attest to the hot, to how hot it was being out there. But it was, it was a good deal for Forest Park and a good service provided to our, to our citizens. And I want to thank all, thank everybody who took part in that. So, go ahead.
So do we know there will be like a itemized type separate report that will be put together in regards to the subject of the COVID?
Well, you mean as a result of the testing?
Not, I mean, all that's, all that the city, or major line items that have been involved with the COVID and has affected the city, as far as showing the expenses where it's really made an impact, how we, what we prepared that this thing to make its way out of here.
I will let Don and Harley speak to that, but I can tell you that since, since this has started, we've been keeping, the staff has been keeping that accounted and all of the things that we've had to expend, of what we've had to expend things for. So to, you know, especially as soon as we found out that there was going to be some funding and knowing how the government works in terms of being able to give them those kind of, you know, the expenditures that we had, we kept very good records of what's been done and what's been spent and what needs to be repaid and or replaced. And I know they've been doing that from the beginning and will continue to do that. There's been some talk from, from Washington about the possibility of, you know, additional monies or second round. Whether that happens or not, we don't know. But if it does, we'll be, you know, we're already there to give them any additional expenditures that we've had as well. I think right now, in terms of where, where we are, you've probably seen in the news in the last few days that I want, the medical people are really calling it a spite. They're saying this is just a continuation. And there are a number of places around the country where it's getting dangerously worse. Watching the news this morning, I know Houston is one of those places where not only is there rising a number of cases, but they are dangerously short to, for hospital beds, for the number of people that are having to be hospitalized. And here in Ohio, I know that at least four of both the Big Eight cities have instituted mandatory mask wearing in public places. I know also that at least one or two of the counties, county commissioners in the other counties, are considering that as a possibility to make it county-wide in some counties. And I would, I would fully expect that at some point in our county meeting tomorrow, that issue is going to come up as to what the county's going to do as well as whether other smaller municipalities outside of the Big Eight are going to follow suit. And at some point, as Don and I talked briefly this morning, it's going to be an issue that we're going to have to deal with. But hopefully, when we get to that point, we will have made all the necessary contacts with all of the necessary people in terms of the Chamber of Commerce and other people that we would need to talk to. I can tell you that over at, I happen to be over there today, at Home Depot, they have now posted signs on the doors that require people to wear a mask. However, when I went in, the assistant manager said that they posted the signs, they had not yet started to actually enforce it. They plan on doing that sometime very early this week. And I would imagine, as Don said this morning, when the major businesses in the city adopts that, pretty much everybody else is going to fall into place. I don't know what you all are seeing, but from what I'm seeing, I'd say almost anywhere you go, you'll find 90 to 95% of other people out are already wearing masks anyway. So we're only going to be looking at and dealing with a few people. There are always going to be people who don't want to do it. But I expect that there's going to be a very small minority of people that would object to it. But I don't see this any differently than I do for those of you who are old enough to remember some years ago, when businesses put up the sign that says, "No shoes, no shirts, no service." I expect this to be just a third add, no shoes, no shirts, no mask, no service. And people will, people will adjust to it. I was one of those people when they first started requiring people to wear a seatbelt. I swammed out, I wouldn't, until I was in Iraq. And then after that, it was pretty much common sense. But that's, to ask you a question, I think that's about where we are. You know, I would say the staff is keeping a very, very close watch of what's going on, not only in terms of expenses, but in terms of everything else that has to do with the, with the virus. And it's really, really hard to keep a handle on. If any of you noticed, I know I have, I think Don mentioned that also, especially last weekend and this weekend, driving around the city, you probably saw a number of people with small tents on sidewalks having graduation parties, you know, graduation parties in a lot of backyards. It's, it's not an easy thing to do to get people to change their habits. So that's, you're basically now dealing with attitude.
Yep. We'll have, we'll have a complete report because we have to keep this explanation be able from, from the CARES Act. And we'll need to explain every one of our expenses and be able to prove it. So since we're going to be able to prove those expenses and keep that background, we'll put it all together. We'll have summaries for all these types of expenses and why they were related to COVID and why we could use this money and how they affected the city. And we can put that all together in one big report. And then we'll throw in the addition of the, you know, revenue loss that we're, that we're having as a result of unemployment, lack of employment, people furloughed, people working from home, and see how, and put that together so the city council and the rest of the community can see exactly what this has caused. And it's, I think it's going to be an ongoing situation. Once we do the first report, we'll probably have to do another one next year. Hopefully, win it so that we can prove that we got some, to prove the expenditures that we, of money that we received from the, from the federal or the state sources. Because hopefully, this first round of funding for the cities is just the first of at least one or two or three or four more because they don't have a, they don't put a dent in what the true effect is in terms of what the city, the cost of the city. So we'll be putting that together as we, as we go and add to it.
Are you seeing any, getting a response from residents on, on a percentage of challenges of people saying that they can't really make their obligation with their taxes?
I'll turn that over to Harley, but I think that she said today that there's not been a lot of people waiting in line this year to pay their taxes.
Okay. Harley, if you can. We, we have had those discussions with tax associates. What I have told them is to try to keep track of who says they're on unemployment. We are trying to work with those individuals to put them on hardship pay plans where they pay small amounts of money. And then periodically, we would check up with them to see if they obtain new employment or get re-employed after being laid off or whatever, and hope that they come back. So we have some workarounds for payment plans for people, but it is kind of trickling in. Today was the first day that we had like $25 in cash and credit cards and whatnot. So we had somewhat of a steady flow today. I want to see what happens as the, we get to the double digits.
Right.
Because people tend to panic once, once you get to the double digits.
Okay. Anything else from anybody else? We've got about a minute before the council meeting starts.
I will, I'll bring up the, the short-term rentals. We did receive a, one email from an individual. I'll bring it up in the meeting. But just to let you know, if anybody's listening or watching this, that I'll bring up that email in the meeting. And it was in favor of it. And we did receive three over about a month ago, when this first came up, that were from Real Estate Investors Association, three members of that who were not in favor of it. So I just want to let them know and that you folks know that I'll, that I'm, you know, in accordance with our policy that we talked about. If you sent it to me before 5 o'clock today, then I'll comment on it. I also received another email with regards to another issue that's I also received another email with regards to another issue that's not related to anything here that I'll bring up under manager's comments.
Okay. Hearing nothing else, if there's no other comments, then at this point, we will adjourn the work session.